I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the time to wait. Okay, roll call. Everyone is here safe one. Mr. Benneker has an excuse absence for the evening. We were properly noticed by, thank you Kate, Conrad. And we're going to kick off our meeting with the facility and potential referendum report and I'll turn it over to our superintendent.
Thanks this evening. We have representatives from VJS and EWA to continue updating board on where things are at about facilities review. They've got our copy reports distributed to everyone, which will probably be helpful considering that this projector and screen are not really designed well for this technical room. And Ryan, can I take the lead? Yeah, it's all yours. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Ryan Rehman Schneider with VJS Construction. And what you have in front of you is the estimated cost for the long range maintenance plan for the entire campus. This plan, we want to go through it and try and do it. It's based on numerous items that we received during the time that we had to address the project. We laid it out, hopefully it's easy for you to follow while walking through it. First off, we put in the table of contents so you guys have a way to easily access the thing. This first page, we wanted to put in here just to emphasize the importance that not everything is going to last forever. What we used as industry standards, I know you heard that last month on some of the stuff, the study from EWA. Well, we use this as our guidelines of how long all of the stuff on the campus is going to last. As we go through this, I want to stress that this estimate is just a one for one replacement of what you have now. It's not giving you anything new, it's replacing or maintaining what you have. As we move forward, all of the costs are summarized on the executive summary page that's page four in your book. We broke it out by North Campus, South Campus, site and athletic facilities, maintenance vehicles and equipment. And then at the bottom of the page, we totaled just for the two buildings, North and South Campus, and we totaled everything together. Also on this page, we wanted to define how we looked at each one of these categories inside of the buildings. So inside the buildings, there's building finishes, building envelope, building furnishings, building systems, security and safety. That key also appears on the next page on the bottom. I want to go through that. The capital maintenance plan includes replacement, again, one for one of what you have now. Roofing, air handling, maintenance, electrical, rust off, light fixtures, pool equipment, kitchen equipment, theater equipment, technology, parking lots, track, tennis courts, football fields, fencing, everything like that. Replacement and updates are painting, flooring, ceilings, casework and painting lockers. You can replace the lockers with this plan. What this doesn't include is anything that you heard EWA present last month when it comes to educational adequacy, space efficiencies, classroom under her own over utilization, increasing daylight, providing with secure entries. We did say we have security in here, but that's replacing card readers, things of that nature. It's not providing that secure entries, those or that. All of that stuff that they addressed in their stuff. Again, down at the bottom of the page, like I said, is the key of what we've included in each one of those different categories. Finishes are only the paint, ceiling, flooring, casework and wood treaters. The envelope is obviously like the exterior walls, your window systems and your roofing. Furnishings, we did price up and place that on furnishings because they do get worn out, but that's desks, tables, chairs, et cetera. Systems, we included the pool maintenance inside of this category, just so everybody's aware of that. Kitchen equipment, all the interior casework, electrical plumbing. Security and safety, I've already touched on it. Vehicles and maintenance, that's all the stuff, trucks, tractors, lawnmowers, skidsters, things of that nature. Site includes the paving, asphalt and concrete, fencing, site lighting and the toilet and concession bill. Under athletics, we broke the fields out, tennis courts, dugouts, soccer locker, the press box and the bleachers that Paul goes under athletics. Few items that we want to clarify, when it comes to the replacement of the finishes, this estimate is only based on replacing 4% of the gross climate annually. So for this 10 year plan, you're only going to get 40% of your facility replaced. We base this expected life of many things inside of a building in about 25 years. So in 25 years, you would get a full replacement if you were able to carry these maintenance dollars forward. We've included inflation, excuse me, inside of all these numbers at three and a half percent annually. We base that on the engineer and news record. It's a periodical that's been around since 1913 that tracks construction costs. And we did the average of the last 20 years in construction is three and a half percent from the total. We've also included in these numbers a contingency for the unknowns that might occur when you start doing this work of $850,000. That is spread across all of these numbers, but we have that amount in here for you. Fees for design, engineering and consulting services are included in certain aspects. We note that inside the book of where that's included. And we've included construction management fees and bond for the works that occur in years one, three and five. Why that's important to note is over the last few years with this referendum that you're wrapping up on maintenance, the schools manage all of that work themselves. And looking at the dollars, the annual dollars, we determined that the school could manage the work in all those other years. Those years of one, three and five are significant with a lot of different trades that would do the work and you're asked to help with that. One item I wanted to note, after our buildings and grounds meeting last week, year eight has a significant bump in it. But at that meeting, that includes replacement of the asphalt under the track and the tennis courts. That is just a sole source, single contractor for each one of those and we felt that the district could manage that. It's a great value, an expensive value, but it's not like you have to manage a lot of different companies. Costs and budgets are derived on historical information and key subcontractor feedback. We went out to certain companies for help in certain areas. We also got input from engineers that have also worked within the facilities that helped us. All the investigations for this and perhaps on unit study are non-invasive and non-destructive. So that doesn't mean, that means we did not open anything up. We did not go inside of walls, we did not go above ceilings, we did not go under floors to find out if there's anything more above here anticipating what is the information we got. Again, I wanted to reiterate, this is a one for one replacement. And the asphalt paving repair that we've included here is based on a report from mature engineering. They did a Pacer test developed by the University of Wisconsin and they rated all of their paving and gave a test two years ago, 2021. Almost three years ago, 2021. There are things that we did not include in here. The maintenance that is typically done annually by the school, waxing the floors, cleaning classroom equipment, et cetera, is not included here. Anything from the 2020 to 2025 maintenance referendum is not included here unless we noted. There was a couple items that we discussed that we picked up. Architectural and engineering features are not included except for those items that I talked about above. Hazardous material basement is not included unless we noted inside of here. We know that there is some asbestos basement that needs to occur under flooring because we have those reports. And if we're replacing carpet, we're going to have to include those costs. But if there's anything that are inside the walls, we don't have a basement for that included. We also did not include any ceramic tile, toilet partitions, toilets, accessories, mark boards, tack boards, glazing, aluminum storefront or masonry replacement. Every study shows most of those things are good shape. The ceramic tiles are exceptional shape, so we can now replace that over the next 10 years. This also includes nothing at the mall in Isar. Nothing including that footprint, parking, anything like that, that building is not included. And then we also have a reference section at the back of the book for the information that we got from the consultants and input from the district. We wanted to include that in here. One item to note, we do not have EWA studying to put in here because it's just really good. And if we can turn to page seven, as you look through this, we have all the costs. We broke it out by the system or the work occurring and grouped that together. We did not do it by the year, which is very tricky when you did it by the year, there's so many different items. So if you look at page seven on the top, we grouped four North Campus, you can see that red ceilings are first. I want to know, at the very top, we have it in bold on the right side of the total cost, that value of $3,365,393. Turn back to page four, you can see under North Campus building finishes, if you go all the way down, that's total is out, that hatch is out. So as you go through the book for each one of those categories, you can go back to that executive summary on page four and see how those different items total out. If you want to look at page nine, South Campus building finishes, you can then turn back to South Campus building finishes, see all those all together all together. Does this make sense? Then if you turn one more page to page 11, behind this is where we put the narrative of what was included in each item underneath each system or those estimates printed upon this, the previous pages. I guess the easy way to look at it is if you turn to page 13 and 14, you can see the building envelope. And we wrote the scope for that work right underneath that. So that written narrative relates to what's included in those dollars. And then starting on page 28, this is the reference items and exhibits that we included. It's the building envelope testing, HUS reports from NISA, the theater department helping with what was going on inside of that space. Raymaker pool report, which I believe almost all of the file of that report. Behind that is the Pacer test study on page 52 reported with how we broke down the paving and how it was getting replaced in what years, the type of work that was going to be done in those years. And then behind that, one of the items that came out of the buildings and grounds meeting on the next page, that's two pages of maps of the underfloor sewer pipes that are now included as being lined out because currently they get ventilated and stuff to them. So we included that and the maps where the furniture pipe is being removed. And I'll go through this pretty quickly. Are there any questions? Well, note that Charlie, the best student even has put on a Google app, you guys have different questions that come out of this. There's a few that are already written in there. So then obviously this is quite a bit of information to digest tonight. Guys, I'm going to play up those questions and responses for you so that we can.
Would you? A college school such as ours, I guess, in a condition such as ours, is it typical to look at things over a 25 year replacement kind of program? Such that 4% then gets done on an annual basis, is that typical?
It's typical for the interior finishes of the building. related to, if you think about how often you replace the carpet in your house, you know, it's not going to be 25 years, but this is commercial rate carpet, it gets thousands of people walking unless they're planning. That's how we base that in a 25 year life cycle, you're going to be replacing that as well. And actually, it would all get replaced in 25 years just because if you look at page three, you know, the component by expectancy, it's a pretty good way of knowing that something's in wear of a certain. They'll say your facilities are very well maintained, there's a lot of items that are gone well beyond the use of a life that the industry saves. But it's given to the point that there's going to be things that are going to have to replace.
This might be a question for Shell, but how would something like this translate into a potential referendum task? What would be, what would this look like? Like an operational? Is that what this is? Operational, complete operational?
Probably. Be able to fund this like we should, we'd have to do some type of operation. If you look at the front end, these first five years, we're so far behind. Those first five years are very expensive. So it may take some capital alongside of operational to get bought out. Put your total ask fee, 52 million bucks in over 10 years. And you can accomplish this plan over 10 years, assuming that inflation rate is small contingency.
Is it fair to say the strategy needed to use this as, this is one option to go through. Very clear, everything is replaced, there's no enhance, no modernize, so to say in terms. So if we can execute this, it's 53 million bucks, you can carve this out, but it's still a level of investment because we don't have the funding to do it currently. So this is kind of showing that we wouldn't need a referendum to do anything here. Or if you look at the past, it could be $48 million, it could be $70 million, but it's not. This is good supporting evidence to go a long way and be still invest, but also against. Logically thinking about that correctly, that they leverage the information in here as a selling point to, all right, let's invest. You have to invest anyway, but let's see what happens for other reasons to improve than potentially also cooperate, working out.
Right, if you look just at the building systems column alone on page four, a lot of that is HFC replacement finance. In the first five years, we tackled first year, there's $8 million worth of equipment that is really beyond its standard expectations. Now it's still running, we had three go down this year that we've had to replace. And so we're in such a reactionary mode right now that that's how we're going. So you tackle that $8 million alongside of an improvement potentially. Or we can just leave it as is and do the one for one replacements. I think that's where you're, kind of where you're going.
Yeah, it's kind of where I was going, because I think to some extent, we'll still be anxious or feared about, I reckon they remember anything to pass. If we're just doing that, why would we, this is also true, but we have such a dire need now from the replacement scale. But we're not doing it necessarily for all those kinds of other things. We've got a foundational thing here, so while we're doing it, we've got the opportunity to be more cost effective and book. That's going to provide rationale for us to leverage this in support of our greater desires, the enhancement of projects.
This would be like the minimum ask and other options would take care of this in addition to whatever else we're trying to accomplish. That's why most likely it can cost more, that would involve some consolidation, new construction and that sort of thing. But my understanding would be we want to address this stuff in any option.
Correct, but it's not this thing, 100% across the board. You look at that as much of this, it would be possible.
Exactly. And that's sort of demonstrated as you look in years five through 10, and the total of North and South, we want to replace some of those big systems. We get it down to a more manageable number each year. Whether we enhance or just replace, we're still going to have a maintenance number each year to maintain.
You do, you're going to be right back in 20 years from now to what, like what year 1 through 4 looks like.
And we were able to keep up, maybe up until the last seven, 10 years ago, when the revenue limits and the declining enrollment just didn't allow us to keep pace with what we needed to keep pace. And those units weren't ready to be replaced anyway at that point. Replaced a lot of units with 2,000 referendum. So now we're in 2024, all of those units that were replaced at that time are up. And you'd love to be able to space those out so you don't run into that same problem 25 years from now. And so we've got to kind of factor that into our, maybe not planning.
What's your move now?
It's like, why do you get out of that? Right, you just love them a lot.
25 years, that's long.
Our requirement now is to replace when it makes sense. We pay a third of the cost of a new unit to repair it, when we just buy the new unit. So that's where we've been in the last three and we decided we're just going to make it happen, we're going to get those units replaced. That's a third of the cost. You hate to be in that kind of reactionary mode because it's not always easy to get these units either. We got lucky with one of them, there happened to be one in Milwaukee area. They said, if you want me to hold it, better let me hold it out. And I actually had two different bidders going after that same unit, so.
Interesting.
So do I understand it correctly that we're potentially asking for operational as well as, are we asking for two different referendums within this task?
I don't think we've decided that. I think that that's going to come as we develop options and in our planning, so.
Yes, it definitely has to be on the table. Okay, because whatever we could get for capital improvement, that does not address the fact that the revenue caps do not keep up with inflation. So we have to figure out how to do the operations stuff at the same time and bring anything that. What that ultimately looks like, the community is going to have to give us some info based on surveys, right, and information that we have to. And that's very common when the districts go with the capital and then operation.
And would the operation be on an item?
I missed what you said.
Would it be forever? Or where, how does that happen?
Those are options. More and more districts are doing that.
Yeah. More and more games passed. It's something like that. We're just kind of.
Are you recurring or non-recurring? We have that something we'll have to decide.
So I know in committee, we had kind of tried to narrow the focus a little bit. It's got a great number of options that we had kind of briefly talked about. What is the time frame then for you to hear back on those options that have been fleshed out and costed out for us?
That's a, that's a good segue. Katie's going to cover the options that we discussed.
Oh, excellent.
And then after we had met, after the grounds meeting, we called as a team to lay out the schedule that what we're going to do in public.
Well, it's unchanged from last year. Oh, I have.
We're shooting toward the costing.
Yes, in February 14th board meeting. And the early February building and grounds meeting, as well as potential compliance legislation meeting at the 26th. Maybe be getting those discussions on some of the costs for some of the big ideas.
At a very, very high level. We'll talk for these person, we'll kind of get into that stuff like that. So this might be a little bit repetitive for those of you who are not, who were at the buildings and grounds meeting. But again, I'm Katie from EWA, wanted to talk about, I hope that way, where do we go from here after we talk about capital maintenance? So kind of just a reminder, these were some of the key takeaways from the other assessments that were done beyond building conditions that we presented at last month's board meetings, the educational adequacy takeaways and the capacity utilization takeaways that we analyzed as our architecture firm. These might look familiar to you, we sent out a poll between last board meeting and this board meeting to understand if our key takeaways and that issue that we identified as an architecture firm and with the core team, if they were in alignment with your expectations and values and then where you saw these in terms of ranking and prioritization. It's important to us to understand what's important to you as a board and at the community and make sure that we address those top items first and foremost. And then sort through the rest as we evaluate options and big ideas. The results of those polls, of that poll is what's listed on the screen. We had everyone rank the top 10 key takeaways from the educational adequacy from one to 10 and with the opportunity to insert another key takeaway or issue that you saw, so those are the ones that are kind of at the bottom. Only one person inserted them or noted on that one. And so at the top of this list really is, is secure entries and safety. Identify that's very important to everyone. And then inefficiency of two separate buildings. Following that, you can read the rest here on the screen where things fell, safety, the kind of big themes of safety being in the, in three of the top five, which is important to note. From here, we took these key issues and developed a spectrum of big ideas. These are not options that have been carefully studied and costed. These are big ideas of how to solve these issues. And we really threw everything out there from do nothing to a brand new school. And the reason that is, is we really want to get a spectrum of both cost and opportunity, both ideas that solve some of your problems and all of your problems. And so on the left here, you'll see a big idea number one is we don't have to do anything. So that is the message that everyone hears, you know, if it is not a value to you to do anything, we don't have to do anything. Option number two, big idea number two is address the capital and maintenance needs. So that is everything that Ryan outlines in the estimate, the one for one replacement, just addressing kind of the bare minimum one for one replacement. Then we get into the category of renovate. This is big ideas three and four. Big idea three would be renovate each campus to address some concerns. So this would be things like we could look at a secure pathway, secure entry pathway for both campuses. There are some limitations in this renovation option because many of the issues related to undersized classrooms and undersized spaces. And we, without additions or freeing up space, we don't have a lot of opportunity to grow. So for example, if we already have undersized classrooms, it's difficult to incorporate breakout space without compromising something. So there's a bush full of space here. Big idea number four looks at where do we have the opportunity to gain some efficiencies so that we can incorporate some of these spaces that are either missing or undersized. And the fact that we have two buildings on one campus that have a duplication of program, some efficiencies can be gained by eliminating all duplication of spaces. So what does that mean? That means instead of having two different art departments, one at North and one at South, you consolidate both to one campus. Instead of having two different tech ads, you consolidate those to one campus, whichever one that are suited to the needs and then grow potentially a little bit from there pending. What we identified in the capacity utilization study is that those specialty programs are underutilized. And so therefore the duplication can be eliminated and you still meet your capacity needs. So there's some square footage that can be freed up to enlarging the standard core classrooms or incorporating breakout space or enlarging some common spaces. That gives you the square footage to do so. These next three options require a visual and these are, these are not actual plans. These are just a cartoon diagram to give you a visual understanding of a potential big idea. I just want to say that with a caveat. So the first big idea, number five, I should mention before I get into these, all three of these options are aimed at addressing the idea of having two buildings. And so the idea is to combine and have one campus in lieu of two separate campuses. So big idea number five looks at taking South offline. I intentionally phrase it that way because it could be a demo scenario where we're demolishing South. It could be a sell South, it could be a rent out South, it could be any scenario, South comes offline and then we do in addition to North. South comes offline and then we do in addition to North to, uh, essentially replace that program. And within doing so, it wouldn't necessarily be a one-for-one, just picking up South and putting it next to North, which is what we are graphically illustrating just for. Just, just for the purposes of discussion, uh, we obviously look at where some efficiencies can be gained in terms of, uh, combining programs. Where, uh, where. And then big idea number six, conversely, is doing essentially the opposite.
That could also include one of them.
Yes, yes, and then.
Wouldn't necessarily have big footprint.
Exactly, and so the footprint says one to two stories, or even these three stories. Um, but look at maximizing our site by going vertical in, in that scenario. Uh, big idea number six, uh, is, is the opposite, taking North offline and adding on to South. Um, the advantage of this option that we saw over big idea number five. Is that North has a lot of your, uh, primary, uh, common space, expensive spaces. Like your auditorium, your pool, and your gymnasium, all of which have been identified as insufficient spaces. So in big idea number five, not only would you need an addition to replace South. But you'd also need probably small additions to enlarge the, uh, gymnasium, to enlarge the gym. And to enlarge the auditorium if you chose to address all of those things, um, I should mention. But it's, so it's an addition and renovation of pretty expensive spaces. Additionally, in the, um, building conditions report and estimate, it was identified that if you broke down North and South. North was the more expensive building to renovate by almost double. Uh, and so, given that it is, it is in poor condition, it has more expensive spaces to renovate. And, um, it has smaller classrooms than South. And, um, a lot of those classrooms do not have sufficient daylight. It was at twenty-two percent of instructional spaces where daylight versus South, which had forty-four percent spaces that have access to daylight. Um, big idea six became a little bit more appealing to us as we went through this study. Um, so the idea of building a new addition, um, attached to South to replace one. And then the last idea is the new building idea. So the idea of taking both buildings offline and building a full new campus, um, between the two. Uh, again, um, this would be a scenario where we'd have to carefully consider, uh, displacement of athletics fields. Um, as a part of a phasing, uh, with these. But, um, there's opportunity in terms of you have a hundred and twelve acre site. There are some opportunities to build in one location and demo in the other without impacting the school's schedule if that were desired. So that is kind of the most extreme of the options. I should mention, uh, relative to phasing in the, in the previous few options. Um, obviously, uh, we have to carefully consider how that would occur, especially relative to athletics in options five and six. And then options three and four, those renovation options, given that they would be pretty extensive renovations for both campuses. While the school year is going on, they have a little bit more impact than these construction or additional options. So we took all of these options, uh, so items with our big ideas, one through seven are up on the top. And cross-reference them on the left with the key issues. Because this was helpful to understand which big ideas address which key issues. Um, obviously on the left, the do nothing, you get no, no, no issues are solved. And on the right, if you build a new school with all of your, um, needs met, you have a lot of green in that, in that column. In the middle, you have, uh, scenarios that solve some issues and not others. And then some that have a yellow identified, and we have that listed as maybe are partially. This is because we, it's either a scenario where it can't be fully solved, just due to fundamental constraints of the big idea. Or we just have, we need more time to investigate whether or not that option can fully solve that issue. Uh, an example would be on, uh, big idea number three. Uh, we're never going to fully solve the inefficiency of two buildings. Because we're just renovating the buildings in place without eliminating the duplication effort. So we're not solving that issue necessarily. Whereas in big idea four, where we are eliminating all duplication of spaces. We are primarily solving that issue in terms of the inefficiency of space. But we still can't solve the inefficiency of time, because students are still walking back and forth more frequently. Between buildings than they would have been previously, because now we've completely separated the campuses in terms of programs. So they would have to travel, uh, back and forth. Um, and then we've also outlined some, uh, advantages and challenges. Uh, with each of these options, obviously, um, you know, there are more advantages to a, a new building. Kind of the more aspirational level of the spectrum and, and less advantages on the left. But the advantages on the left for the do nothing approach is there's no cost to the taxpayer. And just also naturally, the options go from least expensive zero dollars to most expensive at the, the most extreme end. With the new building. Um, and then the challenges, conversely, go from the most challenges at, on the, on the no work option. Uh, the biggest challenge with do nothing is there's no immediate cost to the taxpayer right now. But all of this deferred maintenance is, will only get more expensive. And so it will become a cost, it's just at which point. Uh, and so then on the right, then the less challenges as, as we go kind of along here. That is, uh, kind of where we're at in terms of the big ideas. As I mentioned, uh, we are, this is very much in progress work. These are just big ideas. We don't, unfortunately, at this juncture have costs associated with them. Um, they are meant, we want to bring you along, uh, along the ride with us as we, uh, start to develop these ideas to understand. You know, if we've thrown anything out there that you think yourself as a board or you think your community would absolutely, uh. Not want us to study. Um, or if there are preferred options that you really want us to focus our attention on, one versus the other. For example, in the renovate scenario, we have the, do kind of renovations to each campus. And then, you know, renovate to completely eliminate the duplication of space. If you want us to focus on one or the other of those, uh, it would be helpful to kind of help us focus. I realize that is challenging without costs associated, um, at this juncture. And so we're working in the background to develop some of these options, um, at a very coarse level. To give BJF the information that they need to put some rough costs to these, so you can just understand a rough order of magnitude. Uh, associated with it.
Hold on, we're to take, before we wriggle over this rough course estimates. I think that's a major, uh, lack of the commission right now to really begin the selection.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. So we're looking at the, uh, early February, uh, buildings and grounds meeting to initially present some of those. And just to help you understand a little bit of the process and why it takes so long is. In order to, um, give BJF some cost to understand, uh, or give some inspiration to, uh, be able to produce some cost. We really have to start to define the scope. So we've been having some pretty detailed meetings with the core team to start to define that program. So in a scenario where we're looking at like, for example, uh, renovation, big idea number four. We're eliminating the duplication of program at each, at each candidate. We've gone through the plans and said, okay, well, currently, let's say you have eight art rooms. I don't know if that's the actual number. Um, what number would work if we're consolidating these to one campus? How does that work with your staffing, et cetera? Um, and so we're trying to refine those numbers, assign square footages to those, and develop kind of a rough program for size. And then BJF can look at, okay, is that a heavy renovation scope? Is that a, uh, new construction scope? Is that a light renovation scope? And assign some kind of rough dollars per square foot to those numbers. So it, it takes a pretty detailed effort of us working through this with core team before we can even get to the point. Of, of providing information to BJF that they can cost. So within our time constraints, it's, it's going to be, uh, very tight. Uh, and very, uh, rough in order of, uh, kind of the range. So likely what you'll see at the early buildings and grounds meeting in early February is you'll see a range within, you know, twenty percent or something like this. Uh, so you can just understand, you know, this is a, these options range from zero to, I don't know, but. But in then in between, we have kind of these buckets, uh, this is a range of, of a number within twenty percent.
So what is the plan for the community session? A few weeks here?
Yeah, so the idea would be, um, just like we did with you, with you all, with a poll. Um, it would be very important to us to understand these, this list of key issues. Uh, because there are some pretty strongly defining ones that really eliminate one option or the other. For example, if it is important to the community to, to have this campus be one building. That knocks off the first four options. If it is not important and they are fully content with just having two buildings as they are, then that knocks off. You know, the, the last three options. Um, if safety is really important, that would, you know, prioritize a secure pathway. So in, ensuring that the community's values align with core's values, align with the core team's values. Will help us look back at this chart and cross-reference priorities. Um, and, and, and really focus which options address those priorities that are important.
So it's a session to gauge feedback from the public as to what's important to them.
Yeah.
Have you seen these presentations abroad? Similar.
A big part of it is get them up to speed with what the board has seen. So that way the community sees the same things that you've been seeing over the last few weeks, and then also get feedback.
How many people do we expect to see at that? Any idea?
That, that feedback is not the same as a survey.
No, that'll be in addition to a survey later, when we do have more different options than them. I was just gonna say, it feels like it might include the rest of the week till we have costs. Yes, you will. If I'm gonna come to a meeting as a, any member, I wanna see. How much these options cost, you know what I mean? It's maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, we had that same debate, Brandon, and I guess we're, we could still have that discussion. Our thinking was to be as transparent as possible, and to not have people wondering what's been going on. We thought having an opportunity to hear where things are at at this point would be valuable, but we actually had that exact same conversation around. How is that way against people coming in actually maybe being a little frustrated because, oh, that's all you're telling me? I don't, I wanted to know more, I gave no more numbers. We do have the numbers to do the one-to-one replacement. I feel like that alone is pretty valuable to know it. At a minimum, we need fifty-three million just to keep this thing going the way it is. So I thought it was some value, at least having that and doing it that way. But yeah, we don't, I don't know that we'll get a huge turnout. It's just so hard to stick.
It's gonna get disseminated though through video and social sites. So maybe, is there a chance that we could at least potentially shoot for a high-level number for each of these options by that, by that meeting?
Are the meetings that you're talking about, Brandon, in the ones in late February or late January?
We have one in January, yeah, January, and this is the first one.
Okay. So I think, I think we can, I don't wanna speak for BJF here, um, but we need to understand what we can accomplish. You know, we, we're originally working up to February fifth. Uh, we have a pretty large amount of work to get through here. Started earlier this week to get us to February fifth, and that includes kind of a. It's, it's a heading off to BJF, and then we're turning and focusing on the next option, and then BJF takes that one. It's, we'll do our best.
Yeah, that, I think we had to talked about an initial strategy, sorry, Brandon, before you jump in. At the late January option, essentially presenting what we just presented to you. With the preface of some of the earlier analysis and findings that we presented at last, uh, month board meeting. And then additionally, present a range of tax impacts from zero to like two-hundred-and-fifty million or whatever. We think the most extreme option would be, and having maybe twenty-five million or fifty million dollar brackets between to understand taller, tax tolerance. So it'd be, you know, twenty-five million, fifty, you know, seventy-five, one hundred, et cetera, and then the associated tax impact. So they would be associated with the options, but we know that like, it'd be zero to an extreme number, something like that.
I'm curious, as you've gone through this with other districts before, as the no price take, first blush. Approach of presenting generated, you know, responses that are different or in some ways more. Safer than the ones where everybody looks at the number. Provides towards spending bigger and spending smaller. Valuation. What are your thoughts?
I would, I would just say that the ones that I've been through, more information that you provide to them off of their, what? Dollar, add or off. Engagement, giving them inside of, especially if we're holding it here and getting them inside of here, seeing some of this stuff is, is going to help. The question on dollars always comes up. I'm very hesitant to watch or rush through something. Because no matter what, the first dollar that anybody sees in any scenario is the dollar value that they've been numbered, whether they buy in a tower or building, or in a school. And we wanna make sure that we put that out there, the board has a chance to see that number, understand it, and agree to that number too. So I don't wanna rush through it and say, yeah, I'll hit that twenty-nine date, that's the first time I actually, that's just, it's a risk. Because ultimately, in the end, whatever goes through that, if it goes, that dollar values will all be slipped. So that's something that I'll make sure we're good out there.
Appreciate you saying that, because once, once a number gets shown to people, then they're, they're gonna stick around. And if it's wrong, because we haven't done the thorough analysis, we put ourselves in a, in a poor position.
Well, I think even if it's a range, it would be helpful. I was just wondering, you know, at the meeting, when you're going to go through all this again with, with the community. Are you going to be showing photos of our buildings and the bad areas to give them a real like, oh my goodness?
Yes, absolutely. I think the intent would be to go through that educational adequacy key takeaway. This is just the summary slide of it, but when we showed you guys last, last one that the, uh, last one board meeting. They were full-size images and we talked through each issue. We also talked through the kind of best practices in educational, and we also intended to kind of go through an abbreviated version of that. Just kind of levels at how Arrowhead compares with industry standards generally, and what we look for as to this evaluation. So that would all be the preface to this.
So wouldn't you find, would it be possible, I agree, to arrange at the top of each one of these? So we know that maintenance is fifty, fifty-two, twelve-nine million. Option two, whatever we decided on for the big idea.
Uh, before, yeah.
There, could we put a range that that's gonna be seventy-five to one-twenty-five? And that, you know, if you're, and I agree with your statement that sixty-five million dollars a tax perspective means this to you. Right, and just get range that way, that way, people can just walk away with understanding of where this.
Yeah, I think that.
I think, yes, we could put a range to each one of these. By the time we get to February sixth, we're gonna have. Be two or three of them fully costed. They're, they're coming in cycles, we may not have planned that, they're gonna get us one, we're discovering on that. The third one, or fourth one's gonna flag out. We'll have a very good comments about a range for a few of them now.
Now, remember, you all have seen a presentation in December of the first findings of the report. Community really hasn't seen that yet. So that's what was our intent on the twenty-ninth, was to go through that report. And then to go through tonight's report and, and get to the fifty million dollars of keeping what we have as is and maintaining that. And then get to the big ideas, and then learn from the community, what is your priority? You know, we got to go through the exercise of filling out a survey and prioritizing what we felt was most important. What about the community having that option without costs? And then on the twentieth or the twenty-ninth of February, we'll have the cost. And you'll have seen them ahead of time at, at buildings and grounds on February seventh and at the board meeting in February. And then we go into the twentieth or the twenty-ninth with community costs. And they can come to these meetings also, you know, but it's, it's two more opportunities for them to have it with real costs. That we have time to put together real numbers. And, and we want them to stay engaged and involved all the way through the process. So you guys already got some big steps in December, January, we're, we're kind of bringing them up to speed at this June or twenty-ninth. Our progress is around it.
I was about to say, I'm a little hesitant myself to start putting dollar amounts up on the page. Be visible for everyone yet. So they could also. We can potentially prematurely scare people away to then be done with the process. It's good to get an awareness out that they give it, but I, I don't want to go half-baked, so to speak. Potentially put, um, not fully fitted numbers out, as well as I think we have to talk about. How we would focus, say the numbers. how we would focus, say the number is two-hundred-million. But at what rate are we expected to generate that two-hundred-million? Two big increases to taxes. Trying to get it, there's one three, there's one five, there's one ten, all, all of that matters. Like you're gonna calculate those impacts of the heat. So, and so we have that discussion. Throw a number out, they'll do what I just did on a sheet of paper and figure out what, what does it mean to my house? And they'll be wrong because it won't be exactly right. We can scare people out before we go through the rest of the process. I'm hesitant to put a number on a screen.
I would agree with that. Even if it's a range, I think people will seize on the low end of the range of which that number, let's say, are. We can get off with that. Secondly, if we have several meetings, we don't have to get all the information. I mean, the first meeting, we've kept down all the numbers. In first being, we can encourage people, there's another meeting, it's a process, we'll have more information for you in three weeks or whatever it is, and please, please stick with us. I think it's tough though, however, I, I, I agree with the incredible regards to the dollar amount. But then I wonder if this meeting is premature because I, I think to expect members of the community to come to multiple meetings talking about this. Uh, and, and I get the thinking behind it that we're gonna get them off the speed where we are. Uh, it, it is probably not listening. Um, to, to think that you can have multiple community members coming to home about this. I mean, I think, I think to Tim's point, I think thinking as, trying to take off my board handles, what to do, but trying to do that and, and to come to one of these meetings, what I wanna know is what, what are the, what are the price ranges? What does this mean? What does this mean for a hundred-thousand dollars of, of value of my home? And I'm doing the calculations in that meeting too. And I'm thinking, okay, what, what do I think? I'm, I'm okay with it. So, I don't know. I, I just, I just hesitate. I, I think it's important to everything. But I, I don't know. It feels, feels to me like maybe it's premature to have this meeting without that.
And that, I appreciate the term educating, Chris, because I, I'm a little surprised by this response because I did just tell you, all we were trying to do on January twenty-ninth was educate the community and give them the same information that we are comfortable with. Like this fifty-three-million dollars, I, I have no problem sharing that. Ton of work has gone into these numbers. We feel accurate and good about these numbers. It was pretty impressive what they did to get this all pulled together. I see no reason why we wouldn't want to get, to give community members opportunity to learn about that. And I, from my experience in getting into these tasks, you can't over-communicate. You can't have too many sessions. You will never get punished for op, offering the opportunity for community members coming and learning. And yeah, many may not come and many may not be able to make anything. You will get slammed if community members say to you, why didn't I have a chance to learn this? Why didn't you give me a chance to come? That's what you're taking away by saying, come out on January twenty-ninth and learn what the board has been studying with the architects and construction people who are doing it, the administration. That was really all we were trying to do is give absolute transparency, give people a chance to ask questions. We don't have to put any more numbers than this because I totally understand the sort of thing what that creates. We weren't pushing for that. We're just trying to get feedback conceptually. And how people do that when there aren't numbers, I get it. That could be tricky. But you know, the way these are laid out though, it's really well-done as far as saying, these are just options. Without a number, I kinda like asking people without a number. Because like, conceptually, are you okay with one building, two buildings, new building? That's fair to ask without any numbers because the numbers will come. And to Katie, I think, made the point, if we can eliminate knowing where community members are early on, that's awesome. That helps us just keep our focus on which would be the two-three ultimate plan. So I'm just giving that a little bit of pushback on some of the concerns and letting you know where we're coming from.
And I guess I would add, I really didn't think about necessarily closing down one completely in Canandaia addition until they brought it up here. And so for me, it's a little bit even to refine and find around like, hey, what would that look like? What would that be if one versus the other and started processing that? And I think if there had been a dollar amount there, my first thought would have been like, hey, the public's not gonna go for that. Like, no, we shouldn't be thinking about that. Instead, it's like, what are the processes or the other things that implements? And then from there, we might still see the dollar amount, we might still go nowhere. But at least it allows you to process just the concept of it.
It's interesting. Arrowhead has a unique setup that I would argue necessitates going out to the community even more. Because it's rare that a community has to have this debate about two campuses or not and renovating which one. Like, that is really unusual. All the more reason that I think you want to have more opportunities for input from the community than less.
You've given this, this opportunity, that we consider having the community come in and immediately come to four big areas like school to better understand what, what reported options that are elimination of duplicity. Should we not be having people even on the twenty-ninth, you know, allowing them out to tour and, and see for themselves that they can wait what that looks like physically to the various options that are.
There, there will definitely be tour opportunities. We just haven't talked about doing it that early. So it would just be a matter of us figuring out what that looks like.
Again, we have a really unique school.
Yeah, you'd have to just think all the way.
But what the duplication looks like, very specific problems that it presents for our school. So for them to physically see that, I would be very happy to do the walk back and forth from north to south in the middle of winter.
We could certainly offer that opportunity. There's lots of people sitting there. It's not hard to do.
Well, even to that point though, remember when we toured, that was several months ago? And we said, oh, we should make a video of this, like just going through the buildings and put that online on the website. And I don't know whatever happened. Is that still in the works or? But that would be great because not everyone can always come and, you know, different tour times, that type of thing. So that way they could just sit at home and go through it and see everything that they saw.
That's a very valid point. I, I feel that touring the buildings really has a lot of impact. Since we, uh, met or had the last, uh, board meeting, we've had people inside the facility and they've done the entire Matterport scan and both of their cell cameras. We'll have that available on the twenty-ninth. We can walk people through shoulder spaces. So if there's somebody that is unable to travel back or, we'll have that set up. We can see every single room inside the building on a video screen.
Can we convert that to some sort of virtual, virtual tour, on key things at some point?
Yeah, yeah.
We can see on the, on my.
And when we, we've discussed the prospects and, uh, Adam wants generous to, to offer uh, us potential access to some of the schools that we've toured, uh, over some time. Uh, that we might be able to do for a comparative side-by-side. So it's beautiful. And, uh, to be able to incorporate, this is what we look like with visual tool that you're proposing and done side-by-side with some of these other, uh, schools. And to boot, uh, we have, uh, no obvious here right now. We have a, a very, very generous member of our community that said they would develop the video brackets for us. And that, you know, that, that quickly, we could get something professional and frame this in properly. Uh, we could, uh, put this on, on scoreboard, have it up and running throughout the course of months to frame this properly. It really is something that, that should, that should be excited. So this, this visual tool that you're talking about, when, when would that be available?
It's available now. It's all done.
Yes.
So like I had mentioned, uh, building is grounds. If you guys have ever been on Zillow, if you've gone through the virtual tour on Zillow, that's what you have at these buildings right now. We're housing it on our side. We have a release to get. There's obviously like talks of safety and stuff like that, but it's available. We'll have it set up. Do that virtual tour. It's just like being on Zillow.
And at that point, I would, anybody be able to look on the Arrowhead website and just click on it and go tour on their own?
We have not moved it over to Arrowhead.
But from, from at some point like that.
It can be this.
Twenty-ninth meeting.
I think this goes back to the meatball rating that D and G, you know, finance community lay out this marketing plan. Marketing, ready, patient, PR. It's a little bit of a black hole right now for people. What that plan looks like, what the timing is, depending on what, leading each charter. So. If you get on this.
Yeah, just as a refresher, at one point, Tim ever sent a group out, three subcommittees with various specific domains. Uh, and we kind of pulled back on that, uh, given the prospects that being kind of a, uh, a subunit of a whole board and still require proper posting. Yes, committee meeting or a board meeting, which is the same thing. So we kind of pulled back on that, but in the meantime, I think we're losing ground. Uh, so perhaps to go back and revisit that original concept and uh, that was the three subcommittees who began scheduling meetings and posting them. Uh, so again, really transparent for the public, that's fine. Uh, but, uh, I, I think, I think we should revisit that.
And I think one of the, one of the things we agreed on pulling back and pausing, waiting for was, I think, this, this meeting here after we have this, uh, VJS onboard and this special session and essentially where we're at now. So now is likely the time to, to, to certainly put that in the agenda for the press. Being on the twenty-sixth to help. Ideally invite you guys into that meeting as well to be a part of that discussion. Because again, like we stated before, talking about this, this topic of sub-teens, it, it isn't that we're wanting to pull work away from you. It's just how, how do we, how do we help not, not wait every month to have this conversation? But to help, help you move fast, to help us move fast, so that we can get our community all on track to be at the same, same rate, so. And we are having these conversations, so for what that's worth, we're not as concerned. If you think we're losing ground, we don't feel that way. In all my experience, we're on the right schedule. These are the right dates and the timing is working. And everything that you're wanting to have, I, I'd say you're just a little bit ahead in that line, which is good. But everything you're talking about is stuff that we've been talking about and it will be put together and it will be ready. But absolutely no problem having more conversation at the community meetings. Want to have other ones? We can definitely have more meetings. Not a problem. Yeah, where, where some of my, uh, anxiousness comes from is the fact that we are a unique school and that there's two or three other theater districts going to represent them. Creating the T leaves on twenty-twenty-four economics and financialism will be any better than it was twenty-three. Community is gonna be even more apprehensive aside from paying anything more, knowing that inflation is, is increasing as well as preparing, you know, the increasing currency rate. So all of that coupled together, going back to what you said before, we can't educate about what you can educate about. So that's always easy to support.
If you have theater connections, January twenty-ninth is a great way to get them started. And, and February twentieth and twenty-ninth, that's intended to be the same show. So if they can't make it on the twentieth, they can come to twenty-ninth. If they come to twenty-ninth, they can make it on the twentieth. But January twenty-ninth, we only have this show. I mean, think about it. Put yourself in the place of, uh, coming to a February twentieth meeting with all its work done and you didn't get a chance to see it ahead of time. So that's where we're fighting on January twenty-ninth. If we can throw in a, a tour at the end of that night for those that wanna stay on top of some Matterport stuff that development go through at the meeting. Another opportunity. But the, the key is to get participation from each of those theater districts and the families that go there and get them in the crowd.
Well, we have a subcommittee that's dedicated to that.
It's okay.
That's why we just need to be, and we talk about this more at meetings, so, yeah. If that's a committee. My peers, this is gonna be a crowd for that twenty-ninth. PTO that, um, uh, class, we gotta make, and they've already reached out to all of the PTOs trying to start the user system, providing us to get bodies, because to that point. Everything that we put on for parents in the past five years, the attendance, it's a bit small. And so we would anticipate a struggle to draw people in, we're in control of what we can to because I understand your point, but we might give them some voice in that information that we're getting. And if we get the theater at the mall now, get that background, then we're gonna come to the February meetings. They'll have the reason, the lie behind the situation that they have. So there's a lot of work going on, I can see, with, with our PTO that are dedicating all their attention to this. Get people in charge because, um, they, they, they are still beyond repercussions of, of miscommunications on past projects. I don't know how that, how that is. Damaged opportunities here, so they'll work on that.
That was, that was my concern with regards to having, I mean, I, I, I'm all for communicating and being transparent, you know, just, I, I just, the idea of being able to get the community here is gonna be the biggest challenge. You know, so then, not to be to death for us, then for the February twenty-ninth meeting, we're gonna have at least the three uh, quotes that are gonna be accurate for those two or three different pieces, right? That we'll be able to talk about at that. And then they'll have a better idea of what this really clip was like.
They'll be accurate to a range, yes. And, and, and you will have seen that first on February fourteenth. On February fourteenth, we will tell you, hey, here's what we're gonna be showing to the community on the twentieth, twenty-ninth. You will have seen that information already in early February at that building. We have a meeting on the twenty-ninth. It's gonna be a repeat of this and everything else that we showed to you last month. Um, the twenty-sixth F and L meeting will be that next amount of information as we have it. We'd love to share with you some preliminary numbers, but that's, that's really dependent on how much we can get done on what your workload, I mean, that's, that's a trick to think. But that early February meeting, the building and grounds meeting specifically, will be the first time that we have that completed body of cost ranges on, say, three big ideas. January twenty-ninth is a call for the whole that year. And then on February twentieth and twenty-ninth again. Or one of the.
You can't forget that everything we're talking about right now is still in really, it's the formative stage of this process. The real PR is after the questions have been, the resolution has been approved in summer. Now you've got a three-month window to actually get out and let people know what this is all about. That's really the, that's the work. That's what it's important. It's, everything's critical. People aren't even gonna remember a lot of the stuff they see in January, February. It's, it's that time after the stuff really becomes urgent before the vote would take place. That's where the work is gonna really take place.
But rather than wait for people just to come here, we could trip both of them here.
We'll be going to them. I plan on meeting every one of the PTOs, the theater super presidencies, at least.
And maybe the board meetings. I mean, I don't know what the attendance.
Wherever, wherever they'll take us.
I was thinking that superintendent, public superintendent said how that we parents and students, maybe we can learn from the end of that.
And I may just go right around them on that too. They also have to, I forget at what grade, grade levels that they do at this burden concerts. Opportunity to grab the microphone and talk.
Sing it.
We're really hoping to have some fall concerts. It'll be more important in the fall, although we know it's a question. Yeah, we'll knock it on their doors. So it's, it's good to do all this stuff now, but I just want to make sure we're really thinking and understanding critical times in the fall.
One last thing is, uh, Brian mentioned the Google floor or the Google, yeah, Google sheet. There we go. That we had sent out, um, regarding questions for the capital meetings. We also have one for the big ideas that's on the same Google Drive folder as the former one was for the, uh, facilities assessment. Uh, I know Lynn, Lynn has populated some questions in there. Thank you for those. Anyone else has additional questions, put them in there. We'll get a formal response in there.
Want more plates?
Please, yeah. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you so much for that presentation. Uh, next up is the superintendent's report, uh, with Neola presenting.
Yep, and, uh, we don't really have a presentation. I apologize. We didn't catch that wording on there. But, uh, Richard Zimmerman is here from Neola. He's done quite a bit already for the board at the community level, I think, for two months now. He'll provide an awful lot of thorough information about Neola. You've already had lots of chances to ask questions about it. And also be able to research and see how Neola looks and other districts. Re-hundred, how many is Neola?
And, and it's, uh, over seventy-five percent.
Pretty prevalent. So at this point tonight. So at this point tonight, uh, later in the agendas, when we would be asking for it to take action on moving to the Neola policies, but Richard Zimmerman said he would be here in case you had any questions. He's happy to answer those that I can answer, so I'd agree to. It's okay if there are any questions to have, he's been really thorough.
Would you entertain questions on the Neola contract at this point as well?
Sure.
Um, I, I noticed that there's option one and an option two. Um, what is typical for, uh, schools as they, uh, switch, uh, to Neola? Do they typically go with, uh, option one or option two? Is it attractive? Pricing doesn't change, it's our payment.
Oh, the manner of payment.
Yes.
Oh, sure. Um, in terms of the manner of payment, um, almost all Wisconsin school districts, um, choose the, the option one, which is to, to pay, you know, half in, in one year and half the next year, as opposed to the spread out version. I don't know why that is. Um, I've talked to a lot of, dozens, dozens of superintendents. It just seems they don't see the advantage of, of dragging out the payments they would like to usually work off their budgets or fund balance and get it done with rather than a continual gift. That is the opposite of what happens in other states. Apparently, in other states, the most popular option is option two. It's just, I think Wisconsin is just the way that we think here and let's, let's get it done.
Richard, I've indicated that was the option.
Option one.
Yeah. Thank you. That's the option that, when I was a superintendent and we were looking at those, that's the option we chose. And again, working with my business manager, said, you know, why wouldn't you do this and spread it out, you know? And I think, because it's better to do it this way from a business standpoint and a county. There's, there's just no advantage on spreading it out. Thank you. I know there were questions about the, about the schedule that, that home met and you provided. Conrad and I worked on a, a schedule and to try and again demonstrate this from our standpoint is very difficult. Get this all in, in place, uh, by the June meeting, uh, clear the decks so you can do 100% of your attention on referendum business, uh, following that. And also have everything ready for employee handbooks, sleeping handbooks and the new school year. That's by getting it done at that time.
The other questions?
Just, just one, going back related to the options, uh, there's a, a different option, all of an option point five that is sensitive to being one thing and that's brought, bring that cost down to $500,000.
Um, I've had that question asked before and the answer is the cost doesn't, doesn't change. I've had actually people, because again, people are thinking the same way. Uh, I don't know the ins and outs of why it is, I just know that that's, that's what it is. Some.
There's still a cost benefit over option one to two, because it's option one all in is a little less than option two to spread. So I'm curious if that's, if that's true, to connect that down to one.
Yes, I'm not following that.
Option two is more expensive.
Yes.
Total than option one.
Option one, you get a discount. That's the way that.
I was just looking for that one.
And the question is, do you get another discount? And that's what I said, I've been asked that question before and I have gone to the corporate and said, well, they just want to write you a check and get it done with. Uh, what would the price be? And the answer is the price is what option one is. And I say, what, you know, there's no further discount? And the answer is no, it's, they're set up to be that way. Really what it is, is, is option one is, is the price that they have calculated in their cost, their price. And although they like to say option one is a discount, the truth of the matter is option two is your best, just paying some interest more or less, or you're spreading it out. But they would never say that, they would obviously get a discount. But to understand why they don't discount it further, that means they've hit their, their number of what it, what it costs them to do that, provide that service for you, they can't go more. But I didn't say that.
Questions for anyone else?
Appreciate your ability.
Yeah, thank you. Absolutely. My car's going to know how to get your, uh, the tone down.
Okay, we will, uh, move into, uh, our public portion of the meeting.
No one has signed up.
No one has signed up? We will forego the rule to the public portion of the meeting. Was there anyone who didn't sign up who would like the opportunity? Okay, then moving on, uh, we will go into our consent agenda, which contains the December 13th, 2023 regular Board of Education minutes, the December bill list, the donations list, as well as the resignations, retirements, contracts and letters of appointment. Are there any items contained herein that board members would like to have pulled out before we proceed?
I would like to do my usual, uh, presentation with you and Collette.
No, no, of course.
Um, in the spirit of being appreciative and grateful for committee, uh, contributions to our school and its programs, there are three, uh, individuals or companies who have donated something to us this, uh, uh, this time round that are noted here. Uh, one is Summit Eye Care and Dr. Dana McQuire, donation to keep love and tennis. Then I see, actually, I'm not sure, these gates are a bit old, is this a retirement or is this, do you have any idea? There's another, uh, I'll just go through.
They're old.
They're old.
They were turned in and, oh, this month.
Okay, so these last two were, uh, offered out in September and October of last year, so I won't mention. Thank you. But the previous one was January 29th.
I'm looking for a, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, a motion on table two approving the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Just curious. First up in our committee reports is Chairperson Hammer with Perdula.
Uh, we just had a very good meeting. We had, uh, three members of the math department come in and they presented to the board members that were there or others, um, how they determine what math, of course, uh, Peter School, uh, students should be placed in. Um, they also told us how the AB BLAT would work, a lot of other things, uh, regarding that. It was very informative and it's good to have these presentations, I think. Um, and Sue just shared information about professional learning, professional learning. And we also, um, had scheduled the world languages for a presentation at first in January and then that got discussed at the very end. And world languages has been moved to February and we are doing a science, uh, presentation in January. And it's not reflected here because it was discussed after, we weren't sure if science could make it or not. But that will be the next presentation to science, it's January, and then in February, the world languages. And our next meeting is scheduled for January 25th at 6:45.
Super, thank you, Chairperson Hammer. Uh, next is, uh, finance and logistics group. Uh, our co-chairs, Evers and Bobo Fox.
What did it?
Go right ahead.
All right, so held the meeting on December 15th and, uh, started the meeting with, uh, Mr. Flanner, uh, really agreeing to be the one person to coordinate a, a, any type of communication that may go across, uh, with your swim team, uh, regarding advocacy or, or worship or spiritual renovations. Positions there to, and really to control the communication outreach, it's directly tied, uh, what we may or may not do with the referendum. So establishing that is critical. Is there anything else to note there, Mr. Flanner, that we should add at this point?
At this point.
Sounds good. And then we also discussed, um, I've been getting up to a lot of them to talk about tonight, uh, the member very willing to dedicate some time to some videos related to, uh, the facilities at the time. Mr. Flanner was going to make contact with that individual and, uh, talk about plans forward. Anything else there yet to add?
At this point.
And then finally, which was the, the most exciting point, we altered the agenda to be able to have as much time on the last topic as possible, but, uh, Mr. Jeff Gross bought this file and, uh, very, very complicated Excel document, uh, talking about historical and projected enrollment numbers and how that then relates and projects to, uh, the budget to support that. So this was really our first chance, uh, to, to, uh, improve that file. I think we'll keep, keep that as a, uh, purely a standing agenda item, uh, to just continue to fill that out and keep us educated. Truly what it begins to show is, uh, we get into the bread from a budget standpoint. It really is essentially a, a current, um, referendum as well as, uh, grant funding stops. And that was a very eye-opening, uh, a little bit nice that more members there to hear that as well, uh, because that is in the, from the conversation we had. And on the agenda, uh, as well as any future agenda items, number one, tonight, we have six. That are next, DVD is January 6th. Can I say something?
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Hammer. Uh, next up is buildings and grounds and, uh, Chairperson Evers, absent. Good for you, Joe.
Thank you. Uh, so yeah, we went on January 4th with the Buildings and Grounds Committee, uh, BJS. Ryan was here speaking tonight, you, Aiden, Charlie, who are also here tonight, uh, were present. That was the majority of the meeting, but before that I gave some updates on, um, some rooftop unit replacements. So we've got three of those scheduled, one done, two more scheduled, uh, that we've got in the near future. Also, um, updated the committee, uh, the renovations that happened over the holiday break with the special ed area. You have that space, uh, some walls down and opened up the space, so now staff and students can heat in the area of, have a airhead. Uh, and then we went into the long-range capital maintenance plan and, uh, Mr. Raymond Schneider presented the same report today tonight. So essentially what you saw tonight was what, uh, the remainder of the meeting was really a discussion around.
Just a few tweaks, so if you had the previous document, throw that one away, make sure that it's spread, like when you got signed up.
Yeah, and those tweaks are around the tennis courts. We found out, I was able to reach out to Kevin to find out when was the last time the asphalt was actually replaced and reeded and it had been a long time since we incorporated that clause. I think it turned out to be in year six, you mentioned year eight, it's in year six of the report. And, uh, we're lining the sewer pipes underneath. They were outlined in the last page of this, that, so to put a, there's a way to put a lining in them, so things would flow through them more smoothly. Right now, we, uh, clean them up twice a year, got some dips and things that, uh, we don't want them plugging on us. And so, uh, the lining is, is incorporated into that cross and there was one other small item that we adjusted. So majority of the report is the same, but it did, we got it more accurate. Uh, next meeting, at that meeting we said was going to be on February 1st, but, so that's what's noted in the minutes, but it's actually been moved since to February 7th. Talking about, uh, first flush and some costs, process, that's, uh, that's some of the big ideas.
Can you get the usual iconic versions?
Like trying to version of this, yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up is Chair of it Blanger with Chris Mill.
Uh, Chris Mill is, uh, Matt could, um, bring the color. Very interesting, taking on the job of, uh, kind of pull together a more readable set of usual commitments from board members for such a good meeting. There was some, uh, commentary on that first draft and I hope that in February we're able to pull it together for a presentation to the, to anybody who shows up for the committee meeting. That looks pretty good and I can embrace it. But it's, it's the one and not.
Thank you. I'd like to present, uh, the teacher contract format. All right.
Thank you. Uh, lastly, uh, we have Chairman Harris with Austin.
Thank you, Chairman President. Uh, we have, uh, we were able to sneak two meetings in since our last board meeting. Uh, thank you all who attended, uh, either in person or virtually. Uh, our first one on the 19th of December, uh, started off with Adam Boldt recommending changes to, uh, 623 with regards to new determination system being used for a special ed, uh, to seat determination. Um, let's see, the other piece that we started discussing was, uh, this, uh, basically recommendations to 683, which got moved forward. There was an initial, uh, presentation by our assistant principal, Kerdowski, which came forth to our next meeting in January, so we have a more finalized version of that to discuss shortly. And then, uh, finally, we had a continued discussion with regards to the, the old board docs. Um, we also addressed the idea of remote participation. That also got basically pushed to our January meeting and we'll be discussing that shortly. Uh, prior to getting to that, I will turn briefly back to our president, uh, for a discussion in action. I have a consensus.
Thank you. So we have, uh, some language changes, excuse me, to policy 623. So that were, uh, Chairman Ferris just discussed today. And so I am looking for a motion to approve, uh, language or policy. I'll make the motion to the board.
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion?
There are the additional. Sure. No, semantically changed over to the new process that I'm using. So EPI took away their recommended process. They don't have a recommended process right now. We used to use that because it wasn't the, I never thought it was the greatest, but at least it was backed by EPI. And then the absence of it, I searched around for what I thought would be a better way to do it, to most accurately determine numbers, landed on that, and then just it's changing verbiage and some of the calculations, the little settings.
So we have a motion and second, uh, any, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of approving, uh, provisions to policy 623, uh, all with, with very special net and say aye.
All right.
A box, most please.
Excellent. So then we move on to our meeting that we just had yesterday. Uh, again, thank you for everyone who attended either in person or virtually. Uh, it was, uh, we started off the meeting with a discussion with Richard Zimmer. Zimmerman, again, uh, basically discussing the, uh, Neola license, licensing agreement, uh, that is being brought forward tonight for discussion and action. Thank you for all your hard work and effort, Richard. Really appreciate it and all the hard work you will be doing months ago. Uh, the next piece we talked about, uh, was recommendations to policy 683. The next piece we talked about was recommendations to policy six eighty-three student locker searches. Give a senior language within that that's brought forth. That's going to be discussed and open for discussion in action tonight as well. And then finally, we had a discussion on policy one fifty-one point six. There were two different options with regards to remote participation in voting. Thank you to our superintendent for coming forth, the object of the Ola that like option one was the one that was chosen. So that's what we will be discussing for potential discussion in action against that. There's also changes to process of determining open enrollment seats for twenty-four, twenty-five that our superintendent discussed with us. We're going to take action on open enrollment seat availability tonight. There was a interesting anecdote that I wouldn't mind sharing with regard to that, that Kate solidified. There was a friend of mine who reached out to me today with regards to the open enrollment, how the seats changed. And said somebody who left the district after, he has a daughter and a son. His daughter is a junior. They moved to the Econno One area after his daughter was a junior, like two weeks into the school year. Had started the year and he was and his wife freaked out and said, oh my gosh, there's only two seats for seniors. But Katie and her superintendent, it was determined since he has, since they had been in the school. They kind of, is there a grandfather kind of clause or how does that? Is it just seats already counted? It's just we are here now. So it's accounted. There's also senior rule and there's also the right order. So, yep. That's everything, I guess.
Okay, so we have, we have member both on three different areas now. The first is the licensing agreement with the Ola and the policy serving. And I'll just ask your superintendent if there's anything further that you would like to expand on the contract or I'm assuming what Evers said. Contract to follow. I'm prepared to vote on this meeting. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the licensing agreement for policy service. I'll make all seven. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the licensing agreement with the Ola and the policy serving. Aye. Aye. Opposed? So we have one day and your ayes. Motion carries. Next up is the revision to policy six eighty-three, the student locker searches. I'll make a call after.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion?
There's one thing I'd just like to say, thank you for the revised wording here. It's a big change from the previous board policy meeting. I think it's welcome.
Yeah, that was also a good statement. I'm actually surprised with all our votes. It's either strongly in favor of or strongly opposed to. So I'm sad that I didn't have the policy given out for what is here, but. It's the right thing for our kids, so.
Yeah, it's gone out of necessity unfortunately. And the first was just a draft to get, now it's other thing. Oh, you did all the editing and created a, a viable policy. Thank you for both of you.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of student locker searches policy that's revision to policy six eighty-three, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Excuse me. Last up is the policy one fifty-one six, remote participation voting. Is there any further discussion on this?
Just once, once again, to clarify that we're talking about this meeting, not committee. That's the justice for all those policies. Is that understood better? That's how I understand.
That was what was discussed at the, at the meeting and actually it was, it was called, the name of it is virtual participation at school board meetings. I don't know if there's that, I don't know if that's, if there's any ambiguity there or if that has to be. I don't know, what are your thoughts on that in regards to that focus on justice?
Yep, we made that change to the title. Also, we did the document clarify that again, at least once, maybe twice. I appreciate just clarifying because originally that wasn't a new policy. And discussion, that's how we came out of it. I just wanted to confirm that, that's all. I have no objections.
There was additional discussion relating to one particular sentence, second sentence of the first paragraph.
I think that sentence is the same, but.
Yes.
What?
In general, I think we had consensus that period ago after attending the first meeting and due to a scheduled attitude district due to a physical restriction preventing attendance. Am I correct, assuming that that was the sentence with?
I thought we discussed that that was during the discussion, we had said we might admit that part of the sentence. But then when it clarified that it was only about the regular monthly pool board meeting, it became unnecessary to include that.
Got you on.
Yeah, that's, that's okay.
Yep.
Okay.
But it's no problem changing if you don't want to change that. I'm fine with it, it is better. There was some desire to put it back in to help promote attendance as a whole of policy. The language is largely from included by law. Yeah, Kate, you got those in there, right?
I just copied and pasted all of what was in the bylaw. Okay.
Similar in terms, I didn't literally copy it. About Frank. A few minutes, the whole way isn't on this.
I'm like a disclaimer.
Oh, yeah, it already isn't on this.
So like what Frank said though, you were wondering, would it be like committee meeting?
Like, I was, my point when I was attending virtually yesterday morning, I guess, was just to clarify whether we were talking about all committee meetings as well as full board meetings with this language. And I'm understanding now that we're talking about full board meetings such as tonight only.
I know sometimes there's like a question. Something's moving out of committee to the board meeting. Not technically a vote, but it is in order to answer. So that's not included here, just for, okay.
And there's already kind of a precedent, I guess you could say, for committee meetings with regards to.
As long as this is ours, if like. As long as this is our, our language, this was written expressly for full board meetings because that's what the state statutes govern. State, your committee meetings are whatever you decide. And the public, although you have open meetings, it's the full board meetings that's really the question. While reporting is an issue action. So that's what this was all about. That's why the language in it specifies regular and special meetings. And it talks about school board meetings, just no mention of committees whatsoever.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Anything further? If not, all in favor of approval, I'll pause. Six remote participation voting. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Our next meeting is February twentieth.
Unless we change that. Yeah, I got it ready to go on the update for Friday, but the schedule that was in the sheet that I sent out with everybody to share for the Ola adoption. It helps if we could get the committee and policy meetings before the board meetings so that they can review it and approve, review it and approve. So we'll have that conversation. That's, sorry, I should have pointed that out.
Why don't we use to be on that, or that schedule and pass this?
It makes more sense to me. I like it a lot better, especially for policy. Some of the other ones, it's critical. Those calendars together.
TBD on the next meeting.
Thank you Chairman Evers. Other reports, last the state convention is. Member Vogelthans is planning to attend, nothing else to point out. But it runs pretty likely, but Friday sometime blocking. Lot of offerings. Possible to go, trying to attend. I don't know of any CISA updates. And then we'll move on to new business. Discussion in action on regular education, space and ability and discussion in action on special education, open enrollment, space and ability. And I will turn this over to Superintendent Warner for discussion.
These are the annual requirements under state law as part of the open enrollment process. Their statewide open enrollment process, every district has to establish their seats at the January school board meeting. And so you'll see both two separate promotions, one for the regular education seats, one for the special education seats. Slightly tweaked the process this year, so you can see on that table and explain that the committee meeting as well. These seats are similar to what we've done in the past. I mean, just as if they'd be approved verbatim based on what they just provided for our reading basis. It's important in the event of appeal of denial that we have everything. Eyes, that and two's cross.
The motion, the whole paragraph up there that should be read forth.
I'm not sure if that's the language, did you ever think of something else?
I gave him a testimony.
I have.
Very similar.
I have the verbatives on the motion.
It's similar to that, but a little bit.
So the first, the first motion I'm looking for is a motion to approve following new open enrollment seats, regular education program to twenty-four, twenty-five school year, based on the criteria in the district policy six twenty-three, open enrollment. Seventy-two in grade nine, sixty-five in grade ten, zero in grade eleven, and two in grade twelve. As well as currently attending open enrollment students as presented. So do I have a motion?
So.
A second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I think you actually got two people. Okay, my motion. Read on reader.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving this motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second motion is relative to the special education area. It's a motion to approve one new open enrollment seat in the special education program and two new open enrollment seats in the speech and language services program for the twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five school year, based on the criteria in the district policy six twenty-three, open enrollment policy presented. Do I have a motion?
I'll second.
Any further discussions?
Adam, can you open light me on how these numbers relate to our new policy accepting all special ed kids from Peter Schools?
Yep, so this is just over that a lot. So all students from the Peter Schools will automatically get into view. Attended our Peter Schools previously, you're accepted into Arrowhead. And if there was three, those three would consume that one number, right? And so there would be no more. If there are zero from our Peter Schools, there's still one open to anybody else. Or not in my community, outside of.
That's what I understood there.
Yeah, yeah, so I know, yeah, I got the only change is how I arrive at the number that we're suggesting, but that entire policy doesn't work now last year.
So if there's a scenario of somebody from outside the district that has been open enrolling their students at a school in the district in the grade school and middle school.
Yeah, so commonly Econno One has a lot of open enrollees to start bank. And within that population are special education students. Although we say one here, our policy says that if there's four of those from Econno One, we take all. Our goal was to not disrupt their educational factory.
Anything further? Okay, all in favor of approving this motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is future agenda items. Any suggestions for members?
Again, things that always are rattling around in my head, not to beat the dead horse, but I know that at a previous meeting when we had passed the policy, I know that board member Craig had mentioned that we shouldn't let it go like the positive affirmations idea. If that's a good idea, I know that you had brought that forth at the regular, in another meeting recently. I think we should continue to have discussions about that because I think that's important. I don't know where that stands right now. I know that's kind of, you know, there's a lot of things on our plates and on the table, but still, don't know.
We know, or.
We did.
Was wanting to be a regular.
We did.
And then I am Sue.
Okay, thank you. Oh. I didn't know if there was a meeting ready.
No, no, it was just via email.
Okay.
That's been the most recent, yes.
Okay.
Anything else? If not, I'd like a motion to go ahead and post. And a second. I'd like a motion to go ahead and post.
I'll second.
We'll take a roll call vote, start with member Evers.
Aye.
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 All right, hi.
Aye. Thank you everyone.